We'll call the meeting to order for the Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2022-08 for May 3, 2022. Those that like to stand and do not pronounce prayers and pledges of allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us the day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of it. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
I move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing on all those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. The consent agenda passes. At this time, we now have several proclamations. What I will tell you in advance is that we will read the proclamations at the podium, we'll present it, and if anyone wants to take pictures, they don't have to stand all the way back here. They can come right up to the podium and take good pictures, okay? So you're welcome to do that. The second thing I will let you know is that Larry Dodd is—Larry, you're here, right? He may still be muted.
Yeah.
Okay, but Larry's on, whatever they call that.
Zoom.
Zoom, thank you. And so he has not signed the proclamations. Bill McCain is a little bit late. Bill hasn't signed a proclamation, so after we present them to you, before you leave, if you could leave them at Mrs. Hurley's desk, and then we'll make sure once they're signed that they are personally delivered to each and every one of you, okay? Wonderful. The first proclamation we have is to recognize National Correctional Officer Week, and Ms. Ruth Colburn is here, Director of Corrections. Still smelling a little bit like barbecue and hamburger and hot dogs, and they had a great barbecue this afternoon, and I'm telling you, they had everything. And she's right behind there handing it out to everybody.
It's good to see you here and not over there. I wouldn't want to be over there at this time of the evening, anyway. This is National Correctional Officer Week. This proclamation, whereas correctionals officers have the difficult and often dangerous assignment of ensuring the custody, safety, and well-being of inmates, and their position is essential to the day-to-day operations of correctional faculties, and whereas the duties of the correctional officer are increasingly complex and demanding, and the professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by correctional officers deserves utmost respect, and whereas the important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition it deserves, it is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments these men and women who are vital components in the field of corrections. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby proclaim the week beginning May 2, 2022, as National Correction Officers Week, and call upon the citizens to observe this week in recognition of all correctional officers. And this is signed by County Council and John Posoda. Now, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's good, that's good, that's good. All right, thank you.
Sound the announcement.
John, you'll say something. We'll say something. The warden, before you leave, it was an absolute pleasure to be out there today for the barbecue. And as I said out there, we're recognizing what it is that you guys do this week, but quite frankly, it's 365 days a year. So thank you very much for all that you do, and I'll give you another round of applause. Thank you very much.
Next proclamation we have—Joe, you're going to be reading this too, correct? Yes, great, thanks. The proclamation to recognize the Ben Brittingham Farm for more than 100 years of continuous farm ownership and operation in Wycomico County. That's almost as long as Wycomico County has even existed. So we're pleased to have everyone here. If you could go to the podium with Joe.
Yeah, the Powellville bus unloaded out front a few minutes ago. Come on back.
Just move on in.
I see we've got some of our future farmers here, too. Very long—huh? Yep. How old are they? Yeah, come on up here. I'm proud to say I've known most of this family for a long time, and it's an honor to give this proclamation. Mr. Ben passed away a while back, and I wished he could be here with us tonight for this. Really do. He was really proud of his family, and they were well-deserving of the love he gave them. So this proclamation is Lloyd Ben Brittingham Farm, established in 1915. That was before I was born. A few years before I was born. Whereas Lloyd Ben Brittingham Farm was one of the eight families recognized by Governor Larry Hogan during the 2022 Century Introduction Ceremony at the State House on March 22, 2022, which is given to farms that have been owned and operated by the same family for more than 100 years. Whereas in the early 1900s, the farm was one of the largest strawberry farms in Wycomico County, and through the years, it has grown a variety of fresh produce. The Brittinghams have also raised cows, hogs, and brawler chickens. And whereas the Lloyd Ben Brittingham Farm has a legacy of good stewardship with on-farm best-management practices dating back to the 1970s, and has participated in MDA's Cover Crop Program and the Maryland Agriculture Land Preservation Foundation. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby congratulate the Lloyd Ben Brittingham Farm for being recognized as the 2022 Century Farm Induction Ceremony, done this third day of May, 2022. And this is signed by John Posoda and the County Council, most of the County Council. We've got to get these signed. There's a couple people absent tonight, so you get them signed, I will bring it to you. How's that? So anyway, thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Joe, does anybody want to speak?
Aye.
Would anybody want to speak from the family?
Does anybody want to say anything? I'm sorry.
Probably not.
Oh, yeah, Paige did a good job. Let's get these farmers right in front of us. This is what you're supposed to be.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Next item on the agenda, we have proclamations to the Wycomico County 2022-2023 Teacher of the Year finalists. Tonight here, we have with us Ms. Paige Baker from Prince Street Elementary School, and we also have Ms. Miranda Ebling, if I pronounced that correctly, I hope I did.
Got it?
Good, 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 good. She's with the Special Programs English Language Support Center. I must let you know that Ms. Kimberly Fitzgerald from James Bennett High School, she also coaches softball. And they're in Snow Hill tonight, and Snow Hill's really worried. So she couldn't make it tonight. Those are her priorities, and we recognize that. So if you come to the podium, I'll be reading these proclamations. Following that, we will have a proclamation to recognize the 2022-23 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year, Rebecca Matthews from Wycomico High School. And following that, we will be recognizing—proclamation to recognize the 2022-23 Student Member of the Maryland State Board of Education, that's a big one, Ms. Maron Thomas, correct? Ms. Thomas. So we'll go in that order. So this is for the best of the best, is that not true, right? I mean, without teachers, we wouldn't have an education, and I don't think we'd know where we would be today with any of them. And then we get to the students who are the future, so this is a really good night. Paige Baker, 2022-23 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas Ms. Paige Baker, a third-grade teacher at Prince Street Elementary School, was chosen amongst many outstanding educators to represent Prince Street Elementary School as a 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Paige Baker scored in the top four among her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. And whereas Ms. Paige Baker joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to the education of our children, and professional achievement, now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive congratulate Ms. Paige Baker for being named a 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist on this third day of May, 2022, signed by the Acting County Executive and six out—five out of seven of the county council members tonight. So, any comments?
Thank you. No. Thank you.
Miranda.
Yes.
Good to see you, thank you.
Good to see you.
Miranda Ebling, 2022-23 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. Whereas Ms. Miranda Ebling, a teacher of the English Language Support Center, was chosen among many outstanding educators to represent the Wycomico—excuse me—to represent the English Language Support Center as a 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year semifinalist. And whereas after an extensive interview process of the semifinalists, Ms. Miranda Ebling scored in the top four among her peers and was named a Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist. And whereas Ms. Miranda Ebling joins a distinguished group of Wycomico County educators who have been recognized for demonstrating outstanding leadership, dedication to education of our children, and professional achievement, now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive congratulate Ms. Miranda Ebling for being named a 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year finalist on this third day of May, 2022, signed by the Acting County Executive and members of the County Council. So thank you, congratulations.
Step up here and let me see. You come forward, you come inside. Good deal.
Open it up.
Okay.
Thanks so much, thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay. And now we have Rebecca Matthews. How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Great. 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year. Whereas Ms. Rebecca Matthews, a science teacher at Wycomico High School, was named the 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year and will represent Wycomico County schools in the Maryland Teacher of the Year Recognition Program. And whereas Ms. Rebecca Matthews has taught at Wycomico High School since 2014 and has collaborated with other teachers to align biology courses with national standards. Ms. Matthews has participated in or presented at a dozen conferences since 2015, and she is an enthusiastic supporter of student leadership and achievement. Ms. Matthews advises the school's Student Government Association, the National Honor Society, Destination Imagination, and JROTC, JLAB teams. Always determined to help every student succeed, she also has been involved with after-school tutoring, evening high school, summer school, credit recovery, gear up, and next-generation scholars. And whereas Ms. Matthews earned a bachelor's degree in biology from Swarthmore College and taught for 14 years in other Maryland schools before becoming a committed and passionate member of the Wycomico High School Tribe in 2014, she has made it her mission to help students see opportunities for themselves in college and has supported them in pursuing ways to make their college dreams affordable. And that included taking some of them on field trips, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, that's incredible. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive congratulate Ms. Rebecca Matthews for being named the 2022-2023 Wycomico County Teacher of the Year, done this third day of May, 2022, signed by the County—Acting County Executive and Wycomico County Council. So, thank you.
It is an overwhelming thing to be acknowledged for the career that you have chosen and that you love dearly. I wish that I could bring all of the students that I've taught in Wycomico County with me, because they deserve this honor far more than I do. I did promise the faculty at my high that by next April, I won't cry every time this comes up. I thank this county, particularly Wycomico County Public Schools, for allowing me to do what I do and to support things like trips, and sometimes far trips, and exciting trips. And I just hope that all students have the opportunity to find their dreams, whether it is in college or a career that they love, just like I do. As I tell students, you really should have a job that you love, that takes your breath away, and mine does every single day. So thank you very, very much.
We have a lot of well-educated people in Wycomico County, and a lot of well-educated leaders in Wycomico County, and this is another one. This is fantastic. This is for the 2022-2023 Student Member of the Maryland State Board of Education. We'll give you a round of applause before we even start. This is an individual that has to be appointed by the governor of the state of Maryland. That's how big this is. Congratulations. Do you have any more to speak? Okay, you're nervous. Whereas Maron Thomas, currently a junior at James M. Bennett High School, will represent the nearly 900,000 students in Maryland public schools as the 2022-2023 Student Member of the Maryland State Board of Education. And whereas, following an extensive application and interview process conducted by the Maryland Association of Student Councils, Ms. Thomas was one of the two finalists whose names were forwarded to Governor Larry Hogan for consideration for the position of student member of the board. And whereas the governor nominated Ms. Thomas for the post, and now the Maryland Senate has officially confirmed her appointment, now therefore, the Wycomico County Council and the Acting County Executive hereby congratulate Ms. Maron Thomas for being selected to serve as the 2022-2023 Student Member of the Maryland State Board of Education, done this third day of May, 2022, signed by the Acting County Executive and the members of Wycomico County Council. Thank you, congratulations.
Firstly, I'd like to thank all the council members being here honoring me, and I'd like to thank the Wycomico County for giving me 15 years of my education and for making me the woman I am today, and I'd like to thank my parents who immigrated here 16 years ago to give me this opportunity, and just thank you for this.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize May 6, this National Child Care Provider Day. And Ms. Leslie Sinclair, Josh Hastings will be presenting the—
Ms. Sinclair, are you here?
—the proclamation.
You look a little different than I thought you looked. Wow.
If you'll read it, Josh.
I'll just go ahead and read it, if that's cool.
Thanks.
So this is National Child Care Provider Day, where as an estimated 12.8 million children under the age of six nationwide spend some time in non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides crucial enrichment opportunities to nurture development for children of all backgrounds. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardships for childcare providers and families who depend upon them, have continued to meet the needs of families while risking health and financial stability to remain open. And whereas the future depends upon the high quality of early childhood education experience provided to young children today, and support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council, the Acting County Executive hereby proclaim May 6, 2022, as National Child Care Provider Day, and call upon all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their really, really important work, done this third day of May, and signed by all members. Thank you, Ms. Sinclair, wherever you are at, we do appreciate it, and all the folks there.
Councilman Nicole Ackley will—
I missed something here.
Councilwoman Nicole Ackley will be reading a proclamation to recognize Children's Mental Health Matters Week. Ms. Meredith Miller, a mental health coordinator of Wycomico County Board of Education, and Ms. Jamie Manning from the Life Crisis Center.
I just wanted to share a short story about how this came about. And interestingly enough, as a citizen, a group of parents and students came together and wanted to bring this to Wycomico County. How do we do it? Well, at the time, Ms. Sandy, who works in our office, was doing a 5K to support mental health in Wycomico County. So we partnered together, and it was a very successful race, very successful event, and we have been doing it here ever since. So it's—this is near and dear to my heart. Also, our late county executive, Mr. Culver, he was an advocate in making sure every child in this county got the therapy and the medication they needed to be treated, so. Whereas mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter. Whereas according to the United States Health Department and Human Services, one in five children are diagnosed with a mental health condition. Whereas research has shown that early identification and treatment of mental health disorders among children provides better opportunities to lead a full and productive life. Whereas children and youth with mental health challenges and their families benefit from the access and the support, and also benefit from integration of behavioral health and primary care, education, and child welfare. Whereas it is important for families and communities learn about the warning signs of mental health disorders and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. Whereas the Wycomico County Council hereby proclaims the week beginning May 2 as Children's Mental Health Matters Week, and call upon all citizens to observe this week in an effort to raise awareness of children's mental health.
Thank you so much to all of you for recognizing Mental Health Awareness Month and Child's Mental Health Awareness Week. It's so critical, because you're not only showing the community that there are professionals out there ready, willing, and able to address any mental health needs, but you're also helping us erase the stigma associated with mental health. Every 60% of individuals will not seek mental health treatment this year because they are afraid of the judgment or the negative impacts on their job, their peer relationships. And so acknowledging this in our community lets people know that their mental health matters, that they matter, and that we are here for them. So thank you very much for all that.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to recognize that this time, we do have the superintendent, Dr. Donna Hanlon, with us tonight. We have next to her President of Wycomico County Board of Education, Mr. Gene Malone. And on the front row, we have Ann Sathowski, we have Vice President Mike Murray, Tanya Laird, and Alan Brown. So thank you very much for being here, very much—oh, I'm sorry, John Palmer, yep, yep. I had you written down, John, that you're kind of like a facade. Good to have you here. Ms. Hurley?
Good evening, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper stating that a public hearing would be held this evening at 6:00 PM. The proposed fiscal year 23 budget is posted on the county's website, and you'll see a summary displayed on the screen behind me. I also have copies of the presentation on the table as you walk in, showing the departmental request for fiscal year 23. The Acting County Executive has submitted to the county council, as required by the charter, a balanced budget. He proposes a budget funded by many revenue sources, the majority of which is the property taxes. The budget proposes a decrease in the real property tax rate, but since the property tax rate is higher than our constant yield rate, a public hearing is required by state law, and that will be held at the next council meeting scheduled for May 17 at 10:00 AM. Okay, I'm looking at the expenditures of the operating budget. I will read each fund number and title as shown in the budget, and then the floor will be open for public comments.
Ms. Hurley, floor will be open for public comments on that particular—
Page.
—for that particular page?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then comments in general would be made—could be made at the end?
You can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So if anyone has anything they want to say regarding any of the funds, after I'm finished reading the funds on that page, as we just discussed, you can go to the podium, you would state your name, county residence, and provide your comment. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less to allow time for everyone to speak. Also, please try not to repeat what other speakers have already stated. Council will be having budget sessions on May 6 and May 13, starting at 10:00 AM, which are open to the public, and they will be right here in the county council chambers. So we're going to get started with Fund 01. Fund 01 is the county council, that's $714,305. Fund 02 is Circuit Court, that's $2,103,234. Fund 03, Orphans Court, $84,527. State's Attorney, Fund 04, $4,786,722. Fund 05, Executive/Administration, $683,114. Fund 06, Community Promotion, that's $537,500. Looking at the next page, we have Fund 07, Elections, that's $1,976,659. Fund 08— finished reading the funds on that page, as we just discussed, you can go to the podium, you would state your name, county residence, and provide your comment. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less to allow time for everyone to speak. Also, please try not to repeat what other speakers have already stated. Council will be having budget sessions on May the 6th and May the 13th, starting at 10:00 AM, which are open to the public, and they will be right here in the county council chambers. So, we're going to get started with Fund 01. Fund 01 is the county council, that's $714,305. Fund 02 is Circuit Court, that's $2,103,234. Fund 03, Orphans Court, $84,527. State's Attorney, Fund 04, $4,786,722. Fund 05, Executive/Administration, $683,114. Fund 06, Community Promotion, that's $537,500. Looking at the next page, we have Fund 07, Elections, that's $1,976,659. Fund 08, Finance, that's $1,490,723. Fund 09, Public Accountant, $120,000. Fund 10, Purchasing, $332,005. Fund 11, Law, that's $406,274. Fund 12, Human Resources, $752,833. Going to the next page, Fund 13, Planning and Zoning, $2,178,170. Fund 14, General Services, $1,715,939. Fund 15, IT, that's $1,462,111. Fund 16, Liquor/L license Board, that's $269,404. Fund 17, Sheriff, that's $15,572,278. Fund 18, Salisbury Fire/Ambulance, $766,292. The next page is Fund 19, that's $3,982,000. Fund 20, Volunteer Fire, $2,800,044. Fund 21, Corrections, that's $19,698,708. Fund 22, Emergency Services, $4,477,35. Fund 23, Protection of Animals, $418,778. Fund 24, Public Works, $1,074,014. There are no requested funds for Fund 25, which is Fruitland Water and Sewer. The next page is Fund 27, Mosquito Control, it's $211,308. Fund 28, Gypsy Moth Control, $45,000. Fund 30, Board of Education, $59,83,982. Fund 31, Community College, $6,348,512. Fund 32, Public Library, $1,606,639. Fund 33, Tri-County Council/SHORE, I believe that's Shore Transit, and that's $605,480,000. Fund 34, Public Health, that's $4,411,80. Fund 35, GOB Security, that's $80,520. Fund 36, Extension Service, that's $150,000. Fund 37 is Community Access Channel, $155,000. Fund 38, Office of Economic Development, $189,000. Fund 40, Pensions and Retirement, $3,010. Fund 41, Hospital Disability and Death Benefit, $342,753. Fund 42, Workers' Comp/L liability Insurance, that's $670,000. Fund 43, County Debt Retirement, that's $4,914,000. Fund 45, Social Services, $3,945. Fund 46, Transfer to Other Funds and Contingency, that's $9,58,840. Fund 47, Fleet Vehicles/Lease, that's $565,000. Fund 50, Roads, $13,42,488. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, $3,210,588. Fund 83, Grants and Mandates, $433,210. Fund 84, Teen Adult Center/Doof Point, $61,363. Fund 85, Maintenance of Aged in Community, that's $300,000. Fund 86, Commission on Aging, $750. Fund 87, Life Crisis Center, $13,500. Looking at the next page, we have Fund 51, Solid Waste, that's $9,558,660. Fund 52, Airport, $4,164,231. Fund 53, Electrical Board, that's $47,730. Fund 54, Local Management Board, that's $1,410,500. Fund 56, Narcotics Task Force, $453,806. Fund 60, Recreation and Parks, that's $5,142,767. Fund 61 and 64 is Wycomico Youth and Civic Center, $6,732,235. And I'll pause there because I believe we have a public comment.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't get up soon enough. My name is Monica Brooks, and I am a resident of Wycomico County, and I wanted to speak in reference to Item 51, under solid waste. I wanted to, I know that the council has been currently working on the water and sewer plan that's been updated since 2010, I believe. You all are working on a plan to extend water and sewer to various groups within the county. I just want to encourage you all, I know the operating budget meeting is coming up, but to include in that, I know that you don't know where the money's going to come from necessarily, but I want to say it's a priority for our residents, many of our residents, to get this water and sewer. Eventually, you already have heard so many headaches about people experiencing problems with their septic tanks failing. We know environmentally, especially due to our soil content, that when septic tanks fail, it goes straight to our watershed. People are not able to afford to pay for new septic tanks, especially if they're trying to, you know, take care of their homes. And there are various communities throughout that are receiving from City of Salisbury and others, water and sewer. So, this particular thing, it's more expensive for homeowners to have to contend with septic as opposed, and it's safer because we don't have even in place proper protections for well safety and against well contamination. So, I just want to admonish you all to make it a priority to push forward on this plan for water and sewer throughout the county, and to seek grants or what have you for the funding to make this something that residents, because residents are asking for it, you know, I'm asking for it, and we're hearing that quite a bit. So, thank you.
Looking at the last page, we have two more funds. We have Fund 62, Tourism, that's $3,918,362. And then we have the Wycomico County Nursing Home at $9,952,466. The floor is open for public comments, so you can comment on any of these funds if you just want to go to the podium and state your name, county of residence, and provide your comments.
Anybody have any comments they'd like to make? Come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Hello, my name is David James, and I live in Wycomico County. I'm actually, want to talk about a couple of things down in District 2. I've been receiving some emails from people down there. Nancy, who actually works with the White Haven Historical Society, actually texted me today about the boat ramp down at Wachipwin Park. They want a pavilion put back there, and they want some repairs done. So, when they go to, you know, for parks and recreation, please consider that. Also, I think I heard like 200-some thousands going for mosquito control. The residents down in District 2 are actually having to pay out of pocket for county mosquito control, so I don't know how that ties in, but they're concerned about that. And I think the last thing was with the roads, $13 million, I think I heard, for roads. The roads down that way need work. Okay, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Monica Brooks again. One quick question. The water treatment plant for Sharp Town, does that fall under the purview of the county? Or is that Sharp Town, it's theirs?
Sharp Town.
Okay, wow. Okay, thank you so much.
Public comments.
I'd like to direct the board's attention to line Item 16, the liquor license board. Now, I don't drink.
I'm sorry, can you provide your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kim Grubbs, and I'm a county, Wycomico County resident. I am so sorry. I'd like to direct your attention to line 16, the liquor license board, for $269,404. I'm not understanding why the county pays for a liquor licensing board when that's something that can certainly be in the hands of private industry. Several other counties have privatized their liquor and licensing board. I understand the licensing end of it needs to maintain in the county hand. I understand that part. But why do we have a county liquor board that sort of seems questionable, and it's like the county makes money off of people, you know, drinking, which I don't have a problem with people drinking, that's their own thing. But I think that the fact that the county runs a liquor board is questionable, and they're getting a profit off of that, that I don't think necessarily the people ultimately understand the rationale when there are counties around us that have privatized that whole process, except for the licensing end of it, of course. And I just urge the council to consider privatizing the liquor board.
Good evening. My name's Kyle Cole. My name's Kyle Cole, live here at Wycomico County, over in town of Hebron. Wanted to come forward because reviewing all these, see salaries for every single one of them. A lot of people don't know this, I do work for the county as well. I work out of the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center as EMT, and out there, we haven't had pay raises in a while. So, I am hoping that these salary increases in the budget all have competitive salaries for all Wycomico County employees, because they're the ones that keep this county open. They're the reason why we're able to operate on a daily basis. And a lot of people are leaving to go to other counties that pay better money, such as we've had a few that left us, went to Worcester County because they paid almost double what they're making now. So, when reviewing the salaries, can you guys just make sure that you review it and make sure it's actually at a competitive level, and that our employees get paid what we should be getting paid? Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing on the fiscal year 23 operating and capital budget. Thank you very much for your input. We appreciate that very much. Ms. Hurley?
So, next on the agenda is a public hearing on Resolution Number 46-2022. This is approving the state of Maryland supplemental lease agreement for the commissioner's office located at 411 Naylor Mill Road, Salisbury, Maryland. We do have Mr. Paul Wilber here, our county attorney, if there are any questions.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing specifically on Resolution Number 46-2022. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 46-2022. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 46-2022. Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Wilber, has there anything changed on this? It's a standard lease.
It's just what was presented last time. The main thing is it went from $9 a square foot to $13 a square foot.
All the price had gone up, so. Larry, I'm going to assume that you'll speak up whenever you feel like it. Don't make me have to call on you because I really can't tell if you want to speak and whether your mic is open.
Says he's muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'll unmute when I'm ready to speak.
Okay, all right. Yeah, you can just break in whenever you choose. Thank you. Thank you. Anything you wanted to add, Mr. Wilber?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of Resolution 46-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Resolution Number 46-2022 passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 47-2022. This is approving the Community Power Group's LLC's request to enter into a solar facility site lease agreement with the Salisbury-Wycomico Regional Airport, and we have Mr. Chris Davidson, the Assistant Airport Manager, here if there are any questions.
Good evening.
Entertained a motion from council to approve, hang on a second, I lost my place, to approve Resolution Number 47-2022. Second.
Aye.
Second. The motion's second, thank you. Mr. Davidson, good evening. If you'd state your name for the public so they know who is who, and if you would do the same as well, that'd be great. Thank you, both.
Good evening. Chris Davidson, the Assistant Manager of your Salisbury Regional Airport.
Michael Borkowski, President of Community Power Group.
Thank you both for being here. Any comments or questions of Mr. Davidson or Mr. Borkowski? Okay, any comments either of you gentlemen would like to make? Okay, we do appreciate the very detailed list you gave us earlier, probably a couple weeks ago, in reference to questions that we did have after one of our work sessions, our prior work sessions. Entertained a motion to approve, all those in favor of Resolution 47-2022, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
I gotta get my eyes. This is the bill, I don't have the number, I hear this.
2022-07.
Yeah, 2022-07. An Act to Amend Charter 90 of the Wycomico County Code titled Tax Exemptions to Add a New Section 90-6 to be titled Property Tax Credit for Disabled Law Enforcement Officers, Correctional Officers, Rescue Workers, and the surviving spouse of a fallen law enforcement officer, correctional officer, or rescue worker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. At this time, entertained a motion to introduce legislative bill Number 2022-07. Second.
Second.
You have a motion, a second. Discussion from council. I believe we had an extensive work session, and we ironed out a lot of the details. Okay, is there any other items that the council would want to review?
Mr. President, I did have Mr. Arnett hand me, provided some handouts that I'll pass around for council members to take a look at.
Okay, what I recommend is that the council can move forward on the introduction of the legislative bill. Give us some time to review the information, and then if any questions arise between now and when the actual legislative bill is voted on, we could bring that to the table. Is that okay with everyone? Is that okay with everyone?
If I, if I might while you're doing that, um, there has been, um, Mr. Taylor was here. He's raised several times a preempt, the idea of preemption, and it's actually a reasonable interpretation, but it's not the only interpretation that could be made to this. So where there are the state enabling legislation says a person must be a Maryland resident, it doesn't say they can't be required to be a Wycomico resident. I know, I pulled Howard County, which clearly requires that the officer have been, uh, were actually, and this goes to the Wycomico, um, centric part of this, of this, um, bill. They specifically require, require that they, uh, be a law enforcement or correctional officer for Howard County, uh, or a county with reciprocity. Uh, the same with, um, with the, the rescue worker has to be in the service of Howard Count, County or jurisdiction reciprocity. The, and, and the city of Baltimore is the same. You actually have to be, um, a, a law enforcement officer means a Baltimore City Police Department employee, fire, rescue, emergency medical service means a sworn officer of Baltimore Fire Department. So the, the bill that you are looking at just requires that, that the person be either employed or volunteer with an entity in Wycomico County. Doesn't have to be a county agency. You don't have to be working for the Sheriff's Department. You could be working for Delmar or Fruitland or something like that. You can be a volunteer. You don't have to be working for, uh, some entity that the, the county runs, which is a much broader than these, these two permit. Are you suggesting that we amend this to fine tune it, to make it a little... No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying that's one of the things that's been brought up by Mr. Arnett and I think also Minister Taylor, to indicate, uh, that they want it, they want it open. They don't want it necessarily to be Wycomico centric, uh, and in one case even Maryland centric. And, and I'm saying that it's, that interpretation, uh, it's, it's open to be interpreted, that you can make it that, and I've cited two jurisdictions that has clearly made it even more restrictive than, than the Wycomico proposal.
So are you, are you saying somebody can move here from another district that's been injured in another district and move here and collect this benefit?
Under the state, it's clear they can do that.
Okay. How about the way ours reads?
Uh, ours requires some connection with Wycomico County. And as you saw in the memo...
I thought, I thought that's what I read, but I was...
Yeah, there, the, um...
So they'd have to have worked in Wycomico County to be this, they'd had to be disabled in Wycomico County to receive these benefits, not necessarily for Wycomico County, but in Wycomico County.
If for an entity in Wycomico County.
Yeah, right.
Right, so they could live in Worcester, Somerset, or whatever. Of course, they wouldn't get the tax benefit unless they moved here.
Right, right.
And they can do that during that period from when they're injured to when they're, the jurisdiction, uh, I mean, they're, uh, uh, found to be...
We're not giving this benefit to somebody that say got interest, injured in Baltimore County and then moved here.
Yes, that's correct.
We are not?
You're correct.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the introduction of legislative bill number twenty-two oh seven, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. The introduction of legislation, bill number twenty-two oh seven passes unanimously. Ms. Early, this will...
Um, yes, we could have a public hearing on this bill. Um, this would be the second meeting in June, and I'm sorry I didn't have the...
And at that time, um, when the public hearing is, is done, um, the council will also be able to vote on it at that time, correct?
That is correct.
So the public understands that this could be voted on the next meeting after the public hearing.
And actually, that, um, that can be, that public hearing can be held on June the first, I'm sorry, June the seventh, which is the first meeting in June, um, at six P.M.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for, uh, for public comments. If you have any public comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Afternoon, council. Name's John Hilton, resident of Wycomico County. A couple of questions. We'll start with this bill that you all just put on as the legislative. Uh, some clarification for the volunteer fire company in the county. First off, does it cover us when we have to respond to, say, Dorchester, Worcester, Somerset? Um, that is first and foremost. And does it cover our collateral duties when we're on the job, we're at the station scrubbing windows? Prime example, I ask this because of the Clayton Fire Department Chief that was killed cleaning windows. Because I've received two different copies of this bill, and both copies I've received are teetotal different.
John, I've, I've been to Powellville a lot of times. I've never seen you clean a window.
I clean trucks off the top. I get on the top of the truck to clean them.
If I may, that, that change was made at the last, asked to be made at the last meeting.
Well, why I ask this, because I've received the copy two, and then I, I'm assuming this is the final copy is why I'm double checking, because it is very unclear when you get multiple copies of a paper. Um, and again, I, I'd almost lean towards trying to make this more Wycomico centric because do something that benefits the Wycomico residents, not those moving in from Hartford, Montgomery, or any of those counties. And my third final thing is, and it's a question for not just the council, but anyone that's willing to a, answer it. Why was this one pushed through and when was this one, uh, signed off on by the governor? And there, I know of the other one that has been asked by the Wycomico Chiefs Association and Wycomico Volunteer Firefighters Association for the tax credit for those gentlemen and ladies that are volunteering now. This is going to cover a very small amount of your volunteer fire company versus that one that has been approved and signed off by the governor for many years now. Most every county in the state is covered it. Montgomery, Calvert, Queen Anne's, Anna Rundle, Baldwin, Baltimore City, the city of Cambridge has even looked into performing this, all to give the volunteer firefighters a credit of twenty-five hundred dollars a year for their services.
I would, my thoughts on it, John, would be that this was a lot less invasive and, um, as far as the money part goes, there won't be a lot of money dispersed in this. The other one is coming through the executive's office, and like he has said at your meetings, they got to figure out how much money, where it's going to come from. We did this on our own, correct?
Yeah, we did this on our own.
Yeah, and this, this has still got to be approved. I mean, the county executive could veto this. I don't know that he will or not, but, um, I would assume, is that right, John, that we, we did this?
Yes.
Kind of, it was, I guess you could say it was easier to do. You know, you see what I'm saying?
I understand that, but I'm very aware of this, and, but I'm very aware that the previous property tax credit that has been brought to this, to the council, to the executive for three years now. And keeps getting ignored.
Right.
That was my concern, because this one here didn't get, take much before everybody jumped on the bandwagon to go with this one and ignored the other one.
As Joe says, John, and we don't want to get into a question and answer here.
I understand. I'm just trying to put it out there for you all to hear my question, not that you have to answer me at this point.
The one you're referencing is much, as Joe said, is much broader in scope and could be in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's something that really would have to go through the executive's office together with an operating budget to make sure that every, you know, to make sure it's fiscally correct and sustainable.
Very aware. Um, but I was just, there, there was a lot of other that can be asked of me that I would, not going to take the time of the council and the, sitting here to listen to it, that has been talked about about that tax credit and why it's been pushed to the side. And point blank, it's been accused of several councilors were not in favor of it, it was why, and that is why I asked. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, John.
Hello, Kimberly Groves, Wycomico County resident. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Kim Fitzgerald. Not only am I proud to be a JMB alum, but, uh, Kim and I graduated together, the same graduating class from JMB, so glad to see JMB represented along with Ms. Thomas as well. Seems like J, it's been a night for JMB. Yay, Clippers. Um, also, I'd like you to, again, reconsider, uh, when you're going through the budget, consider the underfunded, the departments that have no employees, that the roads department, um, that, that need employees, um, when you're, when you're working this budget. And I know you, this has a lot of moving parts, so I urge you to, to work on that. Um, and consider that as well, and make sure those salaries, as Mr. Cole said, are indeed competitive as well, and keep, uh, so we can retain top talent in all positions across the county. And finally, um, I know you probably have heard it, the bike, uh, the dirt bike situation. It's apparently come to a head in, um, with numerous reports from WMDT and WBOC. And, um, I, I believe it's going to take a cooperative effort between Wycomico County Council, Salisbury City Council, and the cities, uh, Salisbury City Police, State Police, County Police, um, or County Sheriff's Department, as well as Fruitland and, and Pittsfield with their small police floors, as well to contain this. It's going to have to be a cooperative effort, and everyone's going to have to come to the table and put aside their egos and work together to fix this problem, because it is a dangerous situation. There's got to be a way to placate everybody, and there's got to be a way to make these roads safe, because I've been out there when they've been splitting lanes, and I'm terrified. And when I have my six-year-old in the car, it's, it's frightening, and they come out of nowhere. So I urge the council to work cooperatively with the city and with, uh, the various police agencies to come to some sort of cooperative solution. Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Taylor, Stoli County resident and taxpayer, and in good standing as far as I know. Too many things, so much to say, so a little time, but let me start with the bill that you just, um, introduced. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, you might want to look at Montgomery County and see what there says. Uh, as a, um, uh, someone who grew up in Howard County, I will say it's one of the most provincial counties in the state. It's also the only county in Maryland where none of the boundaries touch a state boundary or the bay, only county in the state. Um, but that's beside the point. Uh, as far as the ordinance, uh, or bill that you've just, uh, been discussing, I think a shout-out should go to Ms. Ackley. She's the one that has pushed this, not in the form it's taken. Uh, after all of the, uh, back and forth, I think two meetings ago, there was quite a discussion. Uh, at one point, as I recall, Mr. Mitchell, uh, informed to Mr. Cannon that some of the changes he was making or proposing, Mr. Cannon had wanted. Uh, but anyway, by and large, I think that the idea of being provincial about this and restricting it to only those, uh, persons who have been involved in Wycomico County is just not good policy. Um, there's not going to be a huge influx of people coming here to get this tax break. Very few that would qualify for it, even if it's opened up to the rest of the state, or for that matter, anywhere. There's not going to be a big influx on this. Uh, so why do it? First responders, wherever they have been, uh, if they are injured and disabled, deserve this kind of treatment. Uh, so I'll let it go at that. I, I really wish that you would look at it, and I think frankly, some of the limitations that you've put on it are possibly unlawful under state law. Uh, but going on, moving on, um, I want to, uh, just address, before you get into it tonight, the charter review, uh, portion of your work session. Um, and as you know, I mean, I've been rather critical of the charter review process this year. Uh, I won't go into all the whys and wherefores, uh, but I will say this. I think you need to essentially scrap, largely scrap, what has been put in front of you by the Charter Review Commission and look at some much more significant changes. One would be reducing the number of council seats. There were two proposals made to the commission, one by me, one by somebody else. My proposal was just to simply do away with the two at-large seats and have five districts. The other proposal, which I'm not opposed to, I think mine's better, but I, I'm not opposed to that other, uh, would be to essentially have seven countywide districts, no, no at-large districts, in other words, just seven. Um, the, the benefit, I think, of mine is it would initially, immediately increase the potential of the minority district from now it's one of seven to one of five, or up to twenty percent of, of the total of the council. Yes, if you went to seven districts and created a second minority district, it would be two sevens and it would be a little bit more, but that would be, I think, a much more intensive process. So that's number one. The other is, I think now that we've had almost sixteen years of the county executive system, I, I think, at least in my opinion, there's ample evidence to say that that ain't the system for a small county like this, that we ought to go back to the way we had it before and get a professional county manager. Um, I'll let it go at that in terms of what I suggest you should get into. Let me run down quickly some of the things that are on the scorecard, or whatever you want to call it, that the, um, commission turned in, that I think you should be aware of. There's a lot of things on there that are frankly minor, uh, and I'm going to skip over, uh, for, for, uh, in the interest of time. But starting out, uh, and I'll, I'll reference charter sections, two oh five A and B, unless there is a special election as described in section two oh six to fill the seat. Now, this goes to the election that was required a couple of years ago to fill the seat that Mark Kilmer vacated. And I will point this out, in two thousand sixteen, the charter was amended to require that election. Uh, I understand that there is some angst about having someone appointed. Uh, this would, uh, specifically, it would be Mrs. Ackley. I mean, I won't be, uh, bashful about that. But in my opinion, that that's the way to go. Um, if the vacancy occurs early in the four-year term of a council member, I think there should be an election, not an appointment. Now, if it occurs later, obviously, a year, eighteen months, then it makes sense to have an appointment. Special elections do cost money. Uh, but in any event, that's that one. Moving on, four oh seven C, this has to do with the, uh, vote on the, um, I forget what it is right offhand, I haven't brought my charter with me. Uh, the, yes, this is to, uh, appoint someone if there's a vacancy in the county executive. And what it now says is it has to be appointed within forty-five days by a council, a majority vote. It would change it to say that all members must be present for the vote. All that does is just complicate things. There's no need for that change. I don't know why it got in there, but it did. Four thirteen, to remove the second sentence in its entirety stating within six months, that has to do with the requirement that after every election, the county executive must reappoint all, or, or appoint new all of the department heads. It's been that way for a while. Uh, there's been one or two instances where it has not happened, but by and large, the department heads get reappointed every sequence. Uh, and I think that is a very valuable provision to have, because that allows the council, if they feel that a department head is not up to snuff, to, to change it. So I would avoid that one. Moving a little bit further on, five oh seven A, this has to do, do with the provision that's now in the, in the charter that allows this council to remove, um, the county attorney. And I would just point out to you that three years ago, or a little less than three years ago, this council did just that. I'm reading from the minutes of the May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen meeting, resolution eighty-six, two thousand nineteen, removing the county attorney from office pursuant to five oh seven A of the county charter. The vote went like this. Mr. Hastings, aye. Mr. Kilmer, who's no longer, of course, on the council, aye. Mr. Dodd, aye. Mr. Holloway, aye. Mr. Davis, aye. Mr. McCain, nay. And Mr. Cannon, aye. So five of the members of this council voted at that time, less than three years ago, to do just that. Why would you want to remove that? You felt three years ago that it was warranted, and you did it. The only person that's sitting here now, besides Mr. McCain, that wasn't, that... The only person that's sitting here now, besides Mr. McCain, that wasn't, that voted no or wasn't involved is Ms. Ackley. So five of you, that's a supermajority.
Mr. Taylor, what number was that? I missed your number.
Which council provision?
507.
507A?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
It's 507A. Moving on, 601A, this one has to do with the personnel system of the county. And it would change the way it's adopted. The county would still establish it, but it would provide that it only could be changed upon recommendation of the county executive. And I think that is a bad move. This council should be in charge of the personnel system. The way it is now, the county executive can make recommendations, you all can approve them, reject them, modify them, do whatever you want. And I think it should change, say that way.
Are you wrapping up?
I'll get there quickly, almost to the last page. 609B, this is to remove, other than the county executive, from 609B, which is the full-time requirement. The commission went on for a long time, back and forth, whether it should be a full-time job or not, probably an hour of discussion over a couple of meetings. Then they decided to remove this. Now, Yulhoff just voted to increase the salary of the county executive to up into a six-figure range. That should be a full-time job. This should not be removed. It should be specifically stated that if you're going to pay somebody that much, it's got to be a full-time job. And as I say, I am moving on. I don't know if I have any more or not. Yeah, I got one more. 1101, somebody wanted to add, had passed the definition of a local governing body. I won't read all of the language, but it would refer to state or federal law. When it says that, then that means that the county executive has to say something and the council has to confirm it. That, I don't think, is a good move at all. This body should be free to do what it wants to do. And a good example is what you're doing right now on the county, pardon me, the police accountability board, where the state law says the governing body is to do something. That should be within your prerogative to do whatever you want to do on that. I have some disagreements with what's being proposed by the county executive, but be that, that's beside the point. This council should have the final word on that. So those are the things that I would suggest that you be very careful about. Much of the other stuff on here frankly is penny-ante. And I don't really think it's worth time wasting referendum money and ink and whatever on it. So thank you. And I'm probably not going to stay around much longer because I have a meeting with a guy called Mr. Poe, Natty Poe, in about 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Shane Baker, Wycomico County resident. Been a first responder since I was 19. So I'm pretty compassionate about this bill and I think we can do better. I think we need to work with the Chiefs Association, the Firefighters Association, and try to make it a little bit better. A lot of these guys are volunteers. They don't get paid. They go out there, put their lives on the line, and I think we need to back them. I think we need to do better.
Thank you.
My name's James Nguyen. I'm a resident of Wycomico County. I've been going around a lot to a lot of different fire departments, talking to a lot of people. And the one thing that I have noticed is that our fire departments are aging and we don't have any more youth coming behind them to replace them. And it's a very concerning thing considering that we don't want to do better for our firemen, for the tax credit. If we can do that, I think we should definitely push for it to incentivize youth and incentivize younger people to get involved. We need to bring firemen into the high schools to let them speak to our kids so they can get interested in actually serving. We are losing firemen left and right. And when we lose our firemen, who's going to put the fire out? When that siren rings or when you call 911 and nobody answers the call, we're in trouble. And I think this council, if this council can do anything about it, I would urge them to do something about it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tim Arnett, Wycomico County resident. I want to speak in support of the bill on disabled police officers, corrections, and rescue workers. Thank the gentleman for his support. And he's absolutely right. I did distribute the amendments that I recommend, very short, for this legislation, and that is to simply add the reciprocity clause to each part of the bill. And the reason behind that is, to my knowledge, Baltimore County is the only jurisdiction that took that away. And they're being challenged on that right now. The problem you have with that is you have volunteers here that have done a lifetime of service here as a volunteer that work in other jurisdictions, jurisdictions that have this, this exact legislation. If they are injured on the job in that jurisdiction where they're working and they have it and we don't do this, they come back here, they will not get this tax credit. We've left them out in the cold. If we have a reciprocity agreement, they come back here, they've lived here, they've done their entire work here as volunteers, they will get that credit. It's a very simple clause to include that will not drive thousands of people here to take this tax credit. The last thing is the part about the $1,500 limit. That goes to exactly what we've heard about doing better. We don't know what the fiscal note is on this. We've all agreed to that. We've all said that. Setting a limit to it at that point is nothing more than throwing a dart at a dartboard. We don't know what that limit's going to be. In February, the median sold house in Wycomico County was almost 250,000. We're going to exceed a $1,500 tax credit very quickly for most people that are going to get this, this credit. So what are we doing for them? Then we're just doing a drop in the bucket instead of actually thanking them for their service and giving them 100% of the tax credit. We're not talking tens of thousands of dollars here. We're talking small amounts, small amounts of money. So I'd ask that you look at the amendments, consider the amendments, and place them in the bill and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arnett.
Good evening, council. My name is Darren Lombardo, Wycomico County resident. I wanted to come here this evening to talk a little bit about education. Some of you know me from the past three years of coming before you and revealing what goes on behind the scenes in our public schools. And over that course of three years, the information discovered was so concerning that I decided to be a solution provider to the problem. And that's why I'm running for Wycomico County Board of Education at large.
Lombardo, not to interrupt you, but this is not a podium for campaigning, just so you're aware. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate what you're doing, but we can't do that.
And I wanted to tell you, which is very important as it relates to the council, we had legislation that failed to be delivered to the state to establish transparency between the county council and the Board of Education. And one thing I plan to do is to bridge that gap between the Board of Education and the county council because everyone needs to be held accountable. Everyone needs oversight. And if we do that, whether we're talking about the council here today or future council members, it is important to establish that because you are overseers of this entire county. You are responsible for overseeing and to make sure that the best interests of our citizens in entirety are addressed and taken care of. So you need to be informed of all aspects, especially with 50% of our county budget going towards education and knowing that our school system performs at half of what it should. But I just wanted to encourage you and thank you for all that you do for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Public comments. Seeing on that concludes public comments. Council comments.
Yeah. Past week, I've had two complaints about large amounts of derbies being dumped along the roads in rural areas of Wycomico County. This is an ongoing problem. I want to thank the county roads personnel for responding and cleaning up the mess, that's what I'll call it. And if somebody sees somebody dumping something or littering, don't get yourself in a jam, but if you can get a tag number and call 911, call the sheriff's office and report it. Be careful, don't want anybody hurt over this. It's not that important. But it seems like our society here lately has total disregard for their neighbors. They, this isn't, this isn't a soda can or a beer bottle that's just being thrown at. There's a lot of that too, but this is actual tar dumps and furniture dumps and things like that. So, you know, we can all work together. This area where this stuff was dumped, I've requested that there be no littering signs put up and hopefully maybe we can get some, some cameras out there. Seems to be a place where people like to dump things, you know, more rural areas. So to the gentleman that talked about the roads in District 2, I've been beating on that drum for years. I think everybody on the council knows that. Our rural citizens deserve the same kind of roads that the people that, you know, live, you know, in the nicer developments in and around Salisbury. And I hope in this budget, I'll push for more money for roads again, as I do every year in the budget. I beat the drum for getting more money into our roads budget. So hopefully that'll, maybe we can get that done. To the lady that commented about the liquor board, the part of the funding we do that was in this budget is for our liquor license board. That's for where people go in and apply for a license for a beer tavern, a club, a restaurant. And that money basically comes back through licensing fees. It's not 100%, I don't think. I think we, I know we still have to fund it because it's in the budget, not it'd be an enterprise fund. There is another liquor, liquor board that can, actually what they call the liquor control board. So that's, that's the one I think you were referring to. So anyway, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. It was an honor to get to give those proclamations. When you talk about one family being in the same, on the same farm for over 100 years is quite an accomplishment with everything that farmers have to go through today to survive. They did that through diversification. As I read the proclamation, they've raised everything, you know, all kinds of livestock and grain and crops and strawberries and all that. So the gentleman that we presented, actually presented the proclamation for, he's passed away, but he would have been proud to be here. And to our correctional officers, myself and John, we were out there today for Correctional Officers Week and those folks work hard and they're kind of the sight unseen people. You know, we don't think about them and we kind of don't want to meet them. We don't want to get to know them very well from going out there. And to our first responders, John, I think we answered your question when you were up to the podium pretty much. I know it is in the budget. I think that you've been provided with some information the fire service has about what may be coming down as far as some kind of relief for the fire department. So anyway, that's it.
Hey, Joe. Any other comments?
I just wanted to touch on the fallen heroes tax credit. And the true, the true intent of this is not to give, you know, large tax abatement to developers coming in, bringing lots of people. This is really a thank you for those who have been injured in the line of duty, police officers, firefighters, correction officers. So just to make sure that we stay focused on what this, the real intent of this is.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I had a gentleman reach out to me who lived on Camden Avenue here in the Salisbury area, but was not, does not live in the city, does not live in Salisbury, does not live in Fruitland, he lives in the county, even though you would think he's in the city. Long story made short, he basically, this is probably, I've probably gotten a dozen of these calls over the last couple of years, but folks who want to have, you know, noise ordinance in the county, who want to have, you know, greater constraint when it comes to the traffic and a lot of the issues that come with traffic, but they don't have the tools to be able to do that because the county does not have the tools. The county has not taken a position to try to address these things traditionally. So that being said, it's been brought up by, of course, by this gentleman and many others. I know Mr. Dodd and Ms. Ackley were on the email also, but how do we, how do we give more tools to Wycomico County to address these other issues from noise to, to traffic and other kind of ways? Areas where the municipalities in Wycomico County have been very forward-thinking and very, you know, this gentleman was surrounded by City of Salisbury where there's all sorts of, you know, traffic slowing methods and other kind of things. And so the question is, why can't Wycomico County do that? So as we go forward, I guess in the coming years, that's something maybe that we want to try and think through and try to look through all potential ways that we can try to address these to give ourselves as the folks who live in the county, who you might think are in the cities, who are actually not in the cities, to try to give them more tools to take care of their home areas. So thank you, Mr. President.
Just a couple of real quick comments. Just a quick apology for being late. I had to speak at another meeting and I kept telling them I had a council meeting, but they got me on a little bit late. So anyhow, did the best I could. I want to touch real quick on a comment Joe made about the, some of the debris and trash and so forth in some of our rural roads. Just as an example of the extent of that, some friends of mine, it was a few weekends ago, they're runners and they run a certain rural stretch of road on weekends and they were just sort of tired of seeing the amount of trash along that road. So they said, well, we'll take one Sunday afternoon and went up their pickup truck and said, you know, we'll spend an hour and pick up some of the trash along that stretch. Well, about three hours later, four pickup loads later, they picked up about a mile and a half stretch of road. They got that much trash off a mile and a half stretch of rural road. And so, you know, it's a, it's a very real problem in our county. I think there's several things. I know we've had some issues with, you know, we use workers from ECI and corrections to, well, we, that's our policy. We haven't been able to do it because of COVID. We lost that and then the money associated with it. So we got to start looking at other, you know, methodologies and, you know, and I think we also probably need a campaign in our county, you know, about keeping our county attractive and keep our roads beautiful and whatever we have to do to have some sort of marketing campaign or something to address this issue because it is a real problem.
I'll follow up on Bill's comments. There's been a lot of folks that has cleaned up roads and we're very grateful to them. But one thing, every time we go through budget and the solid waste comes up, they want to raise fees, either for tipping fees or either for the dump permits. And I tell them, I tell them every time, every time you raise these fees, you're going to end up with more trash along the road. Okay, so we end up with more trash along the road, then we have to pay, in most cases, county roads to go out and clean it up. So we're not gaining anything there, you know? I mean, what money we've raised in, in fees, we're spending it having employees going out and cleaning up the mess. So I think that's something we really need to be cautious of in the future.
You know, some of, I can't talk, I'm losing my voice. That's why I'm sitting here.
Can I speak for you?
You mentioned some of the roads that they did pick up on. I know one of the main roads they did was Boundary Street and they collected about three truckloads of stuff for the county, but they weren't able to identify some of the people that dropped it there and they have prosecuted it. So let it be known that if your name or address is found in that trash that's dumped on the roads, you will be prosecuted because they have prosecuted some of those guys already.
The comments.
You can also give them back their trash.
I've done that before. Took it home to them.
The presidential comments, as far as the Liquor Control Board, et cetera, I would like to see, I've tried to promote it before, whereas the council's tried to work on this since 2006, and some effort to try to separate and to do away with the actual county liquor stores. I don't think that the county should ever be competing against private enterprise under any circumstances. I'd like to make sure we had some type of memo of understanding where they weren't allowed to sell beer and wine, and that includes the seltzers. But I'd like to get that initiative started. So I get what you're saying. Many people are concerned that if you get rid of the very few liquor stores that the county owns, then there will be a huge onslaught, and there will be a liquor store on every corner. So it has to be done responsibly. Right now, the money we get from it is $900,000. So we'd have to figure out how to replace that to a certain degree, but it may be worth it just out of principle alone for competing against private enterprise. The dirt bikes, I agree 100%. I've seen them, and I think, you know, you're not alone in complaining with that. Mr. Hilton, you and I have had several conversations on this property tax break. I'm not quite sure where you, where you have the impression that the council doesn't have an appetite for it. I don't think the council's really been made 100% aware over an extended period of time exactly what it entails and what the actual costs are going to be. I know you spoke at the Executive's County Operating Budget Public Hearing. You expressed your interest in that yet, and I've had many conversations with you, where I would love to see that moved forward and how we could do it. And I believe, as was expressed earlier, it is such a broad ask that it does have to be done in concert with the county executive to make sure that we can afford it as a county. But it is extremely important, it's extremely important to recruitment, it's extremely important to retention. And not only that, but the fire department, the members of the volunteer fire departments in this county deserve it. And I've always said that. I've always said that for years. They don't get enough for what they do for this county, and I've always believed that. What else did I want to touch on? The comment, Mr. Nguyen, that you made, that's a really good comment, that maybe the Board of Education could have like a fireman's day. You know, they have a Father's Day, they have, I don't even know if they still have a Father's Day or a Mother's Day, whether they have one of those days anymore. I'm not sure which.
No.
Yeah. But it would be really good to have something like an occupational day where the fire company does go in, and even, 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 you know, members of the sheriff's department, public safety as a whole. And, you know, get with those children, you know, it would be a good one-on-one relationship with the kids. And it also just might pique one child's interest to be, get into that profession. It could be a Shane Baker out there who signs up at 19. So that's, that would be great. Outside of that, I went to Shorebridge Stadium earlier during the week. I tried to give an update on everything. The Chamber of Commerce, they held a business after hours. It was a really great day. Chris Bitters is doing an excellent job, and baseball is out there, so it's started. So make sure you go there, make sure you get to see the game. It's always a great time, and it's an affordable thing for everyone to do. People talk about Wachomaco County, one of the biggest things in the world that we have to worry about is quality of life. And that's to keep people from saying there's nothing to do in Wachomaco County. We have a lot to do in Wachomaco County, and that's one of the things that we have and many other counties don't have. I also attended the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy graduation. Congratulations to all those graduates. It was held at Warwick Community College. Ray Hoy always does a great job. So many men and women throughout the Eastern Shore who graduated from that academy and move on to spend their careers defending each and every one of us for the rest of their lives. So a credit goes out to all of them. Also went to the Little League Challenger Opening Day. Steve Miller does this. Steve Miller is in charge of Recreation Parks and Civic Center, excellent, excellent guy. And together with many sponsors who made this happen, Field 7 and 1/2 at Henry Parker Sports Complex, they had their Challenger Opening Day. It was a really great day where all the, all the local baseball players came out, the young kids came out, and Salisbury University baseball players came out, and they lined the sidewalks of the handicapped kids that were coming to the 7 and 1/2 field marched through this like a parade and came on their way to the, to their own baseball diamond, and it's a beautiful diamond. So that was a very great day, and I appreciate Steve for doing that. Corporal Keith Heacock, fundraiser, was in Delmar. Excellent time there. Saw a lot of familiar faces at that event. That was a great fundraiser. I'd like to thank all those that put it together. I know Doug Marshall worked very hard to make it happen, as well as so many others. And, you know, it's an excellent night. They evidently raised a lot of money. There were a lot of people, and it's so important to law enforcement as a whole, to instill our confidence as a community in law enforcement, and also for the family in particular. And outside of that, as Joe said, we had the correctional employees barbecue today, and I thought it was really so, so cool that Ruth Colburn, who is the warden, is out there, and she's the one that's throwing the potato salad on your plate as you go through, right in the middle with everyone else. So that was a great tribute to the correctional employee of the week. And, you know, a thank you goes out to all of them as well. So that's a mouthful, I know.
I thought you said we weren't supposed to campaign, John.
Not only that, Joe, but I went, I went over three minutes. So that being said.
Take five.
Entertained a motion to adjourn so we can go into open work session.
So moved.
Second. All is in favor? Opposed?
We take five?
No.
Yeah. You ain't been here. You ain't been here five minutes.
I don't need five.
Thank you.
John?
Thank you for coming.
Take five? We'll take a five-minute recess.
What's that? Not yet, no. We just opened it today. I'm really excited about it. All right. All right, see ya.
What's going on, Bill?